Congratulations.
From the United States of America. To the Republic, to the citizens, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I should mention we are for member board right now. Leah is on her way. She's just stuck in some traffic.
Go ahead.
All right. To get us started, we have approval of Treasury Warrant 26-11 and 26-PW-11.
Who's next?
We have a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve Treasury Warrant 26-11 and 26-PW-11.
Second.
Motion second. Is there any discussion?
Chief?
Sorry.
Or TA?
Yes.
Any issues on the warrant?
The only thing was the Bay Path quarterly payment.
The assessment, okay.
The assessments on it. That's the only big one.
Thank you. All right. Now, if there's no other discussion, we'll do roll call. Alex?
What I?
Second I.
Matt's an I.
And Ledger I. All right. We have a couple sets of meeting minutes for approval. Probably easiest to do these one at a time. The first we have is for our regular meeting from November 10th, 2025. We have a motion to approve as presented.
So move.
Motion is there a second?
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion on November 10th? All right. No discussion. Roll call, Alex.
What I?
Second I.
Matt's an I.
And Ledger I. Next set we have is the executive session meeting minutes of November 10th. There's two matters here. The first one that we'll take in our list is regarding the DCR sewer matter. This one I think we should, it's ongoing, so we should approve not to be released.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Roll call, Alex.
What I?
Second I.
Matt's an I.
Leah, did you want to vote?
One man I.
Ledger I. The second half of the executive session from November 10th is the treasure collector contract. This is one that we had the discussion, came to an agreement, and has the contract been signed?
Yes.
Okay. So we should be able to approve and release these minutes? Okay. So I will entertain a motion to approve and release the executive session minutes for treasure collector contract from November 10th, 2025.
So move.
Motion is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on this item? All right. Roll call, Alex.
What I?
Second I.
One man I.
Matt's an I.
And Ledger I. All right. The next one we have is the meeting minutes for November 12th, 2025. And we can probably do both, the 13th and November 13th, 2025. These are specific just for the TA interviews. These were all public, so if there's no questions or concern, I'll entertain a motion to approve as presented the November 12th and November 13th, 2025, meeting minutes.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All right. Roll call, Alex.
What I?
Second I.
Matt's an I.
And Ledger I. Yeah, thank you. And thank you, Tamika. That was a lot of minutes.
It was a lot of minutes.
Especially the interviews. Thank you very much, everyone.
Welcome, Lee.
All right. Before we get into everything else, I will open a public comment.
Luke Canacchioli, 18 Blueberry Lane. Madam Chair, I debated whether to get up and speak to this issue, and I guess I would be upset with myself if I didn't open my mouth one more time about this. I moved to Rutland in June of 1973. In the fall of 1973, I attended my first town meeting. It was a special town meeting. There were some issues about Wachusen, and I went to the meeting with the late, great Bill Griffin, who was the athletic director and my colleague at Wachusen, who grew up in this town. I learned a very valuable lesson that night. We walked in, Griffin took a look, because the town was real small back then. He knew everybody. He said, "I'm going home." I said, "What do you mean? We haven't argued our point yet." He says, "We lost." And the lesson I learned that year was, if you have a serious issue that you're concerned on, you have to bring people. And I've tried to do that over the years. And I think in the 53 years that I've lived in this town, I've probably missed a handful of meetings. I've made just about every one of them. Some of them were great. We had a lot of fun, good arguments, good debate back and forth. I was never so disgusted as I was the other night on Article VII. Just, in fact, it disgusted me so much that I had to walk up, I had to get up and walk out. I was afraid I'd make an ass of myself later on in the meeting because I couldn't get over that. You folks and everybody else that was on that agenda, the moderator right here, the members of the planning board, you should not be embarrassed or upset or feel terrible, you know, "We're in a tough tire strait, you know, I shouldn't be taking my $35," or whatever. Yes, the hours you people put in, because I know what we put in, because I was a selectman for nine years, you may be making a penny. It's just the idea that you should be compensated for what you've done. $7,000 was not going to break this town. $7,000 was not the way to start to get us out of a hole. You want to start, do $100,000. Find some way to do that, not $7,000. I was really upset over what took place that night, and I couldn't believe the amount of votes that went to knock that thing down. There is that group of negative people. I'm sure the moderator knows that. Under our new system, there are votes that should be 100%, and there's always two or three noes. But to have the vast majority to go no against that article is just appalling to me. I'm worried about in what direction the people in this town are going in, if they really care and really concerned about this town. So be proud. Don't be, you know, it's your money. Accept the money. You deserve it, and you should have it. Thank you for listening.
Is there anybody else for public comment this evening? Okay. We'll move into communications, member comments, announcements, and town administrator update. Just a few updates on my side. Just reminders, with the upcoming Thanksgiving holiday, that town offices, the library, and the community center will close at 1:00 PM on Wednesday this week to allow staff to prepare for the holiday. And buildings are also going to be closed on Thursday and Friday in observance of the holiday. Registration for the festival trees is open, and the event's going to run for two weeks this year in celebration of their 25th year. Details are available on the town website homepage under news and announcements. Is there any other? Is it just under news and announcements?
Yep, that's the only location.
Okay. So there's a PDF with information and links for registration and any other details there. Reminding everyone that as we head into the winter months, it's a violation of the town's bylaws to put any snow into the public way, and the winter parking van is in effect as of November 1st, meaning that no vehicles should be parked overnight in a public way or during a snow event. We would also like to thank everyone that donated for the food drive. Food pantry was able to pick up three different times due to the amount of goods that were received through the generosity of all of our residents. So we thank everybody for their generous donations there. And stay tuned for details on the holiday giving tree, which will be there in December.
Is it still open? Can you still bring food up to the town?
You can, yeah. Yep, we're there until 1:00 on Wednesday.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. And last but not least, and probably most interesting for everybody, just a reminder that the tax classification hearing will be on Monday, December 1st, for anybody that would like to attend. The tax classification hearing. That's everything I have. Are there any other member comments? And Paul?
If I can take a minute, I'd like to say thank you to the cable access group. We ran into a problem where the, excuse me, where the amplifier in the school has failed, and they are working on replacing it. But at any rate, on Saturday afternoon, we had to get there and get everything set up and get everything ready to go, excuse me, on Friday afternoon. And so we had everything, we started at 2:00, and we were ready to go at 5:00 in the afternoon. So a lot of hard work and a lot of moving things around, changing things around, and so thanks to all the gang.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
If I may, to piggyback on Paul's comments, I just wanted to thank all the staff and department heads that were there on Thursday night for the special town meeting, as well as for all the residents who came out and participated. I think for a special, our special numbers have been consistently about 100, and I think that Thursday night was closer to 120, 130, I believe. So I think that's a good turnout, and so I just wanted to thank the community and especially the department heads and staff that were there on a evening, gave up their evening to be there to support the articles. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? All right. Well, welcome back our acting town administrator. I will turn it over to you for any updates.
Sure. As you know, next week, the draft budget is due to the psych board and finance committee. I plan on having it out by middle of next week. I'll be a couple days late. I wanted to have one last chance to meet with department heads that didn't follow the guidance, so I want to clean that up and properly format it for everyone to be able to follow, as well as CIPC is meeting next week, so we should be able to move forward with getting that recommendation as well. We'll be working with the treasurer's office for debt service schedule to really see where we can plug some things in as our debt is falling off. We want to replace those debt. So we were working on that. What else? While I was away last week, we did, got to commend Tamika on her hard work of keeping me updated with what's going on. As you know, tonight, we'll be talking about the TA's contract and executive session, but I think the contact was made between me and Ms. Butler, and we've been able to move the process along for tonight, so very happy with that. Other than that, everything is going very well. As everyone has probably already noticed, we did have a significant motor vehicle accident this evening on Main Street. It is a fatal, so we will keep you updated. The police department has brought in the reconstruction team, and once that's done, we'll get the information out to the public of what's going on. So just wanted to give you that. That's all I have for this evening.
Through the chair? Or where are you going to ask?
I was going to say, are there any updates on town accountant or?
Yeah, so we had a tentative offer out to an individual. We're just waiting to see where we can fit that in. It'll be in front of you on the 8th.
For the accountant?
For the accountant.
Okay.
We are moving forward on the planning position. We'll start interviewing that in the next week as well, so.
Through the chair. Where did the accident take place?
Between Bond Road at the town line and just up by Nancy Drive, that section.
Really?
Yeah, along that stretch, so.
That's why I was late. The road's closed. They were routing out Bond, coming from Holden, and then, I think, out Maple. I think, I'm not 100% sure.
It just posted just past 10 West. Okay. Rowan was posted it.
Was there a commercial vehicle?
Just going on now. No, two passenger vehicles.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions? All right. We can get into the agenda. Is the board amenable with Mr. Canacchioli here if we jump down to new business for the project requests?
I'm fine.
All right. So we have Mr. Canacchioli here. He's brought up a couple of project requests that he would like to review with the board to see if we're agreeable with moving forward, so I would give you the floor to talk through.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I was thinking of a couple of things that I'd like to, that I think should be taken care of. As an old social studies teacher, the monument depicting the Civil War, the people who served the North and from the town of Rutland, has gone into, not disrepair, but there's a lot of mold and stuff on it. It's very black, if you've seen it. Very, very black. So I thought that should be cleaned and without costing the town any money. So to prepare myself for this meeting, I started to do a little work. I talked, first of all, with Fred Martin down at the cemetery, and he told me about a material that he used when he took over the cemetery in cleaning headstones. And in fact, somebody else gave me a copy of what the stuff was, so I know what it is. That would be something that either myself and somebody else would do, or I would buy the, we would buy the material and see if the town, DPW, could do it. I don't expect this to be a major job. Having coffee one day across the street, some people came in that do professional cleaning, so I asked them to give me a price, and he gave me a price, and it's more than reasonable. More than reasonable. So we could probably get this project done for, again, no cost to the town, but it would be around 500 bucks to have a professional come in, and that way there, we know it's going to get done like this and the whole thing done. $500. Again, I have sources to come up with the money, so zero to the town, if you'd like to do it. Little history of that, I believe Randy would probably know more than me, being a historian that he is, that, and he is, I think that statue originally was put in right after the Civil War, right? In the 1870s, I believe? And then the Hurricane of '38 knocked the statue over, and it took until somewhere in the 80s for them to finally replace it, and I was there for the unveiling of the new statue. They had a nice outdoor program ready to go, and an incredible thunderstorm came through the town of Rutland, and we had to go to NACOAG. So we never really got to see the thing unveiled, but there was a nice ceremony. So I'd like to clean it, if you're okay with it. Okay? That's number one. Number two, I did a little research, and the wonderful band area we have up there, built by the Blair family, needs to be completed. So my idea, my thought was, because I know they work down here, was to go over to, if I have your permission, to go over to the Vogh School that our kids go to, talk with the Vogh director. My understanding, what we need to do, what we would need to do, A, would be to put wiring in the ceiling. Okay? So they have an electrical department over there. The kids go out on projects like they did here. And then what we would like to do, as people have talked about, again, where the posts are inside the thing, put railings. Now, that should be an easy project, because once the kids, if in fact they do it, measure it, they could do the railings at school and then just bring them on site and attack them. And then put a ceiling in. If you notice, there's no ceiling. So once the electrical was in, we'd put a ceiling up inside that bandstand, so it would finish the job. And I'm sure, if I have a talk with my good friend, Clee Junior, that we could get the material at cost, so that, again, it's not going to cost the town a lot of money. And again, I would look to fundraise that money, depending on what the price would be for the materials. So I would like your permission, after the holiday, the Thanksgiving Day, that I would come contact the director of the vocational school, the vocational wing of Bay Path, and go over there. For a chance, they're too busy, just happens, it just happens, and life is so wonderful, it really is. Two doors up from me, two doors up from me, my house, is the principal of the Worcester Vogh School. A wonderful, wonderful man. And I know their kids go out, do all kinds of projects. And I know they leave the city of Worcester, because I was the union rep in Worcester for 16 years, so I'm aware of that stuff. So we have a couple of sources that get that project done. So with your permission, I will go forward on both projects. If you say okay on the statue, if it's not too cold to do it now, we'll do it now. If not, we'll wait till the spring. Okay? Thank you.
Questions from the board?
Louis.
Yeah?
Clee originally built the gazebo.
Right.
Would you talk to him about his ideas for railings and electrical?
Sure.
Okay.
No problem.
Okay.
His father would haunt me from the heavens if I didn't do that.
Tell me about it.
We're on the, I have one for the gazebo and one for that, but I'll stick with the gazebo question. In finishing the ceiling, is there any way that you can reach out to some of the bands that play there to make sure the acoustics are going to be good? Because I know some of the feedback has been, bands really enjoy playing there right now because the acoustics are good.
Are you sure we don't want to ruin it? Yeah, okay.
So I think having the ceiling complete is great, but I just want to make sure it's done with a mind towards the acoustics of that, knowing that it's not solely for our bands, but that that's primarily how we use it.
I understand. Okay, yeah. I would think that you could probably put the ceiling in where it's not just, you know, go up along the depth of the ceiling, as long as we get all that stuff covered. The center beam is going to be there, but there's nothing you can do about that. You're not going to take out that steel. But I certainly would, I certainly make sure, if in fact we go forward with that, that that would be taken into account.
And I think the original plans for the gazebo had included, like, not railings, but more that could be doubled as a seat.
Yes, I was, yeah.
Have seats. So I think the original plans had those. I'm not sure why they weren't included in this version.
I heard a little something about it, which I don't want to bring up publicly.
No, 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 but that's.
Nothing serious, but yeah.
That was my expectation, that they would be there anyway, and they weren't, so.
If there were plans, and if you do want me to do this, I would certainly talk with Clee and get the plans and bring it over to the school, so that they could see what the design was and what they were hoping to do, and we'll go from there. Absolutely.
Okay. And then my comment about the monument cleaning is, I believe Randy's here, Zach Lowe had done some work in cleaning headstones here at the Old Burio Ground. So he has, as an Eagle Scout, as part of his Eagle Scout project, so he has information on how to clean the headstones from the mold and moss and lichen and everything like that. So as a young adult in the community that recently has done that, he might be another resource.
Okay, thank you.
Just to know that he very recently did it. I think it was last, two summers ago, maybe, Randy, I believe.
Okay, yeah. If that's on the agenda for me to do, I certainly would touch base with him. Maybe he could do it.
I have no idea. I don't want to volunteer. I don't want to volunteer anyone.
Oh, no, I'm not holding him to it either, but, you know, I'd just as soon keep it local and, you know, give him some money. Again, money shouldn't be an issue. I'm not worried about the cost.
Yep. Thank you.
You're welcome.
My questions for the bandstand, too. Do we have any idea if we're going to need any electrical permits to do any of that work?
I have no idea. I'm sure we would.
Tamika's not.
I'm sure we would. I mean, if we get the okay, when I talk with the vocational director over there, I'm sure he's going to lay all that stuff to me. I'm sure we're going to have to have the, our building inspector's going to have to come over and take a look at the electrical people. No plumbing, so we're all set there, unless you want to put a little outhouse in the back. Anybody favor that? No? Okay. So, yeah, and the building inspector, my good friend, our new building inspector, he's a, I like him, he's a funny guy. He's a good guy.
Yeah, that would just be my concern, is making sure that all those pieces and permits are.
Yeah, we'll take care of that. I don't want to burn the thing down.
Agreed. Mr. Jordan?
So I have had the opportunity to use the bandstand as a place to marry a few people, being JP for the town, so we've used it as well. In turn, I would want you to consider mainly our youth in this community. If you put a railing up there, they may use it for other things other than a railing, you know, with their bikes and things like that. There may be, it's not out of the ground, right? So some people would tell you they really don't want a railing for that thing. You may want to take that into consideration, but I don't want to take away from.
Well, I think the bench would be the problem. The railing wouldn't be the problem. You'd have to be pretty good to beat your system with a railing.
Louis, you're a smart man. Have you seen the youth of today?
Yes, they're wonderful. I have two, I have a 20-year-old granddaughter and an 18. They're wonderful young ladies. I would trust them implicitly.
Okay.
Speaking about the youth, how many people went to the musical at Central Tree this weekend? Fabulous. And they talk about youth. There had to be 20, 30 kids in that whole production, between backstage and on the stage. All great kids doing a heck of a job, really, seriously. They do, this is my second year going to the plays, I just found out about it, because the principal's a secret agent, doesn't tell me what's going on. I found out through the grapevine, but two years in a row, they're magnificent. They're really good.
And on the side, I think this year, the high school was some of the directors, so I think the high school.
Yes, four kids, 15 and 16-year-old kids, and they did a marvelous job. Marvelous job, yeah? It was really, it was really good. But I will keep, we'll talk that into consideration.
It's just a hand for them.
I thought they raised their hands.
Me, too.
All right. Are there any other questions or discussion on the two project requests?
Just to Randy's point, I'm not necessarily married to the seats railing part of, I think that that's, I mean, the original plan showed it, and then I was kind of disappointed that it wasn't there, but we've had it for two years without it, or three years without it, and I think it's, in some ways, worked better because there's more ease of access, and people can set up chairs closer or whatever, so I guess it's kind of how the rest of the board feels or how the community feels.
The reason I bring it up is because most bandstands that you go by in the center of all communities have railing, at least a railing. We don't need the seats. I, you know, I concur with that. We don't need the benches. That would be nice, but we don't need it. And it wouldn't be all sides, maybe just a couple in the back. But the railings, I think, would really finish the whole job off, and it really looked nice, with one section open, obviously, so they can get their equipment in, maybe facing the crowd. But that would be designed by the experts, you know, the people that know that stuff from the Vogh School. But I really think it would, I think it would finish the place off, and I don't see it as a major project for them. I mean, we're not talking about, like, a lot of wiring. I don't think it would be that difficult to wire. And again, with your suggestion about making sure we don't goof up the acoustics with the ceilings, and that shouldn't be a problem. So I'd like to, I'd like to personally see it done. I think it would just fix it off. It would make it really look classy. It's nice now, but it even looked nice. So I'm at your behest. Let me know if you want me to do the project. If not, I'll find something else to keep. Mary has a list this long of stuff for me to do, so I'll be busy.
How would the board feel about having Mr. Canacchioli talk to the Vogh Schools and review some plans and bring those designs before the board, before, or are we comfortable with just letting him move forward?
I don't know how much we can do about the statue. My concern about the statue, we're dealing with hazardous chemicals. That would be an issue there, those cleaning agents.
They told me it wasn't hazardous. They told me it wasn't. The stuff is supposed to be, not going to create a problem.
Okay.
Especially the professional group. I mean, he'd be liable. Imagine if he came in with stuff, then somebody got sick while on a job he did, the guy would lose his business.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't personally have a problem with that, but I think that would be, I'd love to see that done, you know? I think it would be a great enhancement to the town.
Thank you.
Besides, we got to give you something to do, Louis, you know?
Good point.
With regards to Bay Path, when you're over there talking to them, you might also talk to the superintendent about using the electronics department to put in a sound system that
I, just to Randy's point, I'm not necessarily married to the seats railing part of, I think that that's, I mean,
Yeah.
The original plan showed it, and then I was kinda disappointed that it wasn't there, but we've had it for two years without it, or three years without it, and I think it's in some ways worked better because there's more ease of access and people can set up chairs closer or, or whatever, so I guess it's kind of how the rest of the board feels or how the community feels.
The, the reason I bring it up is because most bandstands that you go by in the center of all communities have railing, at least a railing. We don't need the seats, yeah, I, you know, I concur with that, you, we don't need the benches. That would be nice, but we don't need it, and it wouldn't be all sides, maybe just a couple in the back. But the railings, I think, would really finish the whole job off, and it really looked nice. With one section open, obviously, so they can get their equipment in, maybe facing the crowd. But that would be designed by the experts, you know, the people that know that stuff from the Vogue School. But I really think it would, I think it would finish the place off, and I don't see it as a, as a major project for them. I, I mean, it's, we're not talking to like a lot of wiring, I don't, I don't think it would be that difficult to wire. And again, with your suggestion about making sure we don't goof up the acoustics with the ceilings, and that shouldn't be a, a, a problem. So I'd like to say, I'd like to personally see it done, I think it would just fix it off, it would make it really looks classy. It's nice now, but it even looked nice. So I'm at your behest, if, let me know if you want me to do the projects, if not, I'll find something else to keep. Mary has a list this long of stuff for me to do, so I'll, I'll be busy.
How, how would the, the board feel about having Mr. Canaccioli, um, talk to the Vogue Schools and review some plans and bring those designs before the board before, or are we comfortable with just letting him move forward?
Um, I don't know how much, uh, we can do about the statue. My concern about the statue, we're dealing with hazardous chemicals, that would be an issue there, those cleaning agents, so I don't know anything about it.
They told me it wasn't hazardous, they told me it wasn't. The stuff is supposed to be, not gonna create a problem.
Okay.
Especially the professional group, he, I mean, he'd be liable, imagine if he came in with stuff, then somebody got sick while on a job he did, guy would lose his business.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I, I don't personally have a problem with that, but I, I think that would be, I'd love to see that done, you know? Uh, I think it would be a great enhancement to the town.
Thank you.
Besides, we gotta give you something to do, Louis, you know?
Good point.
With regards to Bay Path, um, when you go over there, talking to them, you might also talk to the superintendent about using the electronics department to put in a sound system that would be for use with others than bands, okay, it can be done.
Or in it, built into the, uh, bandstand?
Yep.
Oh, good idea, thank you, I didn't think of that, thank you.
No, I, you know, it would work that, and then the bands could come in, set up their own equipment.
Yeah. Thank you, I didn't think of that at all.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. All right, well, why don't we take them one at a time, if, um, I'll entertain a motion on the Civil War statue?
Um, I'll, uh, move the motion to allow Mr. Canaccioli to do the legwork, groundwork, to establish the cleaning of the, um, uh, of the statue, Civil War statue, and provide pe- feedback to the town on its progress.
At no cost to the town. Is that okay, Harry? At, at no cost to the town?
At no cost to the town, yeah.
Uh, and we have here in collaboration with, with Department of Public Works, just in case we need to collaborate with them on anything.
Yep, okay.
Be fine with that, and that's the motion.
Friendly amendment?
Oh, yeah, and to, uh, consult with the Department of Public Works.
Second.
Okay. Motion in a second, is there any discussion on the Civil War monument? All right, roll call, Alex?
Second I.
My.
Matt's a nine.
Ledry. And how about the, uh, bandstand? Any discussion or motion?
So, before making the motion, I just wanna get a sense from the board, do we want, I personally would be comfortable with Mr. Canaccioli working with the school and looking at the plans and everything and kind of taking, and not coming back to the board, it was originally a three-hundredth anniversary project, um, committee project, and so I think the board was kind of out of a big piece of it anyway, and so I think, you know, empowering our residents to do that work with, in consultation with, you know, the professionals is totally fine. I'm comfortable with that, but I wanted to, before making a motion, how the board feels.
Well, I, I guess I'm comfortable with it too. The only thing I would ask is that because Mr. Blair donated a lot of money to put this thing up, that he has the final say in what it looks like.
I was gonna, you know, he's, I certainly was not gonna do this without talking to him, but I wanted to get your okay before I launched into this thing actively.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
Then I move to, uh, approve Lou Canaccioli to pursue completion of the gazebo on the town common, um, in working in consultation with the, uh, Bay Path Regional Technical School and others as needed, um, to include, uh, benches or railings, not a necessity, ceilings that are acoustic friendly, wiring including, um, a potential weatherproof sound system built in, um, at no cost or limited cost, at no cost to the town, um, and in collaboration with the building department to ensure proper permits are obtained.
Okay.
Just that.
Second, fine with me.
Motion in a second, any other discussion? All right, Alex?
Second I.
Wait a minute.
Matt's a nine.
Ledry.
Thank you.
Go to work.
Thank you.
Thank you, happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, you too, keep us updated. All right, uh, moving back into old business, uh, we have the Wachusett Leadership Group, which was a request of Leah's, um, so we stuck that back on the agenda, and just as a reminder for everybody, this was, um, an item that came up, um, from Austin, which is essentially a way to, to create a collaborative group among the five member towns for the WRSD to kind of, um, have a more budget-friendly financial plan, just a little bit more communication, a little more collaboration when it comes to, to those areas. Um, so we wanted to just bring it back around at Leah's request and, and talk through, um, the, the document that's outlined here. If anybody has questions or discuss next steps to move this forward, um, to reach out to the other towns.
So, I think the way it was kind of left was that, i- if I remember correctly, is the board at the time approved, in theory, the document as provided here, um, and then it just kind of got put on the back burner as far as who or how it would be reached out to the, um, member select boards, member town select boards, um, because the thought would be that this is really the kind of, um, towns themselves, select board, FinCom, and try to include, um, WRSD also, um, uh, so, we know that the TA and T, TMs have their group, that they work with the administration of the school committee, um, but this would really just try to provide an, uh, an avenue for the, kind of the electeds and the, the FinComs to, to get together intentionally also. Um, and so, I think it was just kind of put on the back burner as to how it would be communicated or brought forth to member towns, the, the other towns, to see if there was any interest in kind of pursuing, um, this document. Um, so I just wanted to get it back on the radar, as I think it's really a valuable opportunity to, as we're working through budget things and knowing what the school committee, or the, um, not the school committee, the school budget is looking like year over year. Um, I am the municipal rep for Wachusett, uh, to the WRSD, so if you would like me to reach out to the select board, the select board chairs of all towns, obviously Cece and you, Jen, as well, I'm happy to do that, if someone else would rather do that, that is also fine. Not to say that I would be the one, the representative on this committee, but just the one to start the communication, to see if there's interest from the select board, the other select boards in pursuing, um, this opportunity.
I guess I'm a bit, personally, through the chair, I'm a bit uncertain as to how to go about this, because what I see here is we have the TA that's working with the superintendent, then we have this separate group that doesn't involve the town administrator, dealing with the towns, and somehow, we gotta get that connection together. So I don't know how that is, would happen without, to me, the TA involvement at some level on the Wachusett Leadership Group.
And, I was, so, so. Does it state that the town administrator or the town managers would be able to participate just as non-voting members?
Right.
So they would have, they would be there in attendance at whatever meetings are established, have input?
So right now, um, all five town, town administrators or town managers meet with the school superintendent monthly already. So that, that's already a scheduled meeting that happens every month.
And I think the thought, if, if I may, I think the, the thinking is that the, um, select boards and FinComs don't usually come together at the table with WRSD kind of at all, until the budget discussions, the budget roundtables in, over the winter. And so this would provide an opportunity, an ongoing opportunity, more of, as a working group, and even look towards policy, like what might we be able to better advocate, advocate for at the state level, um, as a total regional group instead of a piecemeal regional group? Or, you know, if we all go in and say, hey, look, this is where we all are individual budget-wise, um, what's everybody thinking, whether there's an override or significant cuts or whatever, it's that opportunity as a electeds kind of, electives and appointeds to, to have those conversations, um, and not solely rely on it through the, the town administrators, town managers.
I see it as a good opportunity to have regular discussions amongst the towns with the school district as to our financial standing and where, you know, wh- where we're currently at and how we're being impacted, and be able to have, um, you know, even more targeted discussions with regards to the budget, you know? More collaboration on, rather than the school just handing us a, a budget. This would be our way of, of hopefully working with them on the budget versus the other way around, just having it handed.
And I think going a little bit even farther beyond that is looking at when the regional agreements are, are due for updating, um, having something like this may provide an opportunity to have more significant, you know, uh, back and forth with the district when the regional agreement is up for renegotiation, um, at a, a much earlier time point than just kind of have it presented to the towns that we are basically told we have to agree to, um, where, at least on the financial piece, right, that we could have some more, um, thoughtful dialogue at an earlier point.
I, I personally am, am comfortable in taking a next step, which for me, I, I see as, as taking this document and reaching out to the other four towns, TAs, town managers, and their select boards to get their feedback on whether this is something they would even entertain, because if we don't get agreement from everybody, to me, that's, it's a non-starter. You know, we need buy-in from, from all five, so I think getting a, a good idea of the interest of the other towns in something like this is kind of really the next step to do anything to move forward.
Um, who would reach out, who would be the start of doing this?
Um, well, Leah's the municipal rep offered to do that, or we could, um, with acting TA, Chief Knight, could also reach out to the other town administrators and funnel that to their select boards, whichever the board's preferences.
Okay, I just, this is a great idea, and I've been for something like this for some time now. I just wanna make sure, uh, I know we have a member on the board that can be the representative. I just wanna make sure the board is kept fully informed either through the member, through, uh, uh, minutes of the meeting that we have, that we are given access to, or, um, or a TA or something like that. I mean, I like it, I just want that smooth relationship that wants to make it work, that we're not, we don't end up in some type of, uh, Hatfield and McCoys, well, we're fighting for this, TA's fighting for this, I don't wanna get into that stuff. So I'm trying to figure out how we can get the information that we can work with everybody that we know what's going on.
Um, if I might suggest, uh, it, again, for transparency and, and communication, it might be easiest to have Seth reach out to the town administrators, managers, and have them funnel it down to their select boards, to have discussion at their meetings, and then send everything back through Seth as far as their feedback that he can provide during either a separate agenda item or town administrator update.
I think that's a good start.
Okay. Is that agreeable to the board?
That's fine.
Okay, do we, do you wanna motion for that, Tamika?
It's completely your discretion, it's not required.
Okay, I think it's.
I'll document it in a minute.
Yeah, just, just directives, just to take the document, have Seth reach out to the towns, the TAs, and.
So is this considered a draft at this point?
Draft, yes, I, I think, you know, we're certainly, I, I would certainly want feedback, a- again, uh, buy-in from all the.
Right.
My, my understa- I mean, the board has changed a little bit, my understanding, m- my memory is that this was, uh, an approved draft, but didn't feel comfortable marking it as a final, just because there was no input from the other towns, and so
Yeah.
obviously the board's changed a little bit, but, so I would still think it's conceptually an approved draft.
Okay, yep.
Okay, so we'll take that step and we'll bring it back around when we have information.
Thank you.
Thank you, Seth.
No problem.
Any other questions or discussion on that topic? All right, we'll move into new business, we have a one-day liquor license application, um, we have Mr. Jordan here, this is for, uh, which event?
The Jordan Farm Turkey Pickup Event.
Thank you. Um, we have all the approvals, this is one of the special, um, special, I call it special approvals, right?
It is, yeah.
With the MDR. And everything else is, we've got everything, we've got the notification email that everything, all the paperwork was submitted, uh, that we need, all the fees, application fees are paid, so.
Yes.
There's no questions from the board, we have, uh, two days, the twenty-fifth and the twenty-sixth, which is tomorrow. Tomorrow and Wednesday, um, and this is at the farm.
I move to approve the one-day liquor license for Hardwick Winery pursuant to the approval granted by the Mass Department of Agricultural Resources to sell bottled wine at Jordan Dairy Farm at Fifty Moschuk Road on November twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth from nine AM to six PM as presented.
Second.
Motion in a second, is there any other discussion? All right, roll call, Alex?
All right, second I.
Wait a minute.
Matt's a nine.
Ledry. Thank you very much. Good luck, it's gonna be a busy few days. Okay, um, moving into, why don't I see, oh, it's right here, um, the, we have a sewer, we're gonna put our Board of Public Works hats on for this, but we have a sewer abatement request uh, in front of us for the reason of the hot water tank ruptured and water poured out for hours before the water was shut down. We do have a memo from Director Kolowski, um, that states, due to lack of proof as to the amount of water that was lost when the water heater let go and started leaking, it is my recommendation to deny the request for abatement. So we have to have the discussion on whether to abate or not, or abate a portion. Is there any discussion, questions?
I just see by Chris's letter that there was no way to tell how much water was lost. So without that, um, how long, uh, I, I don't know how we can make a recommendation, so I'm just questioning if there's a way they can provide us with some kind of volume, but if not.
Well, and I, a- again, I feel for the resident in question, um, but if we a- abate something like this for a, a equipment failure, you know, do we set a precedent for any other type of failure where that's resulting in water leaks? That can't be proven to be, you know?
Yeah, I sympathize with them, 'cause if the, if the leak happened inside the house, so you had really a big problem.
Right.
Well, I mean, I think that part of this ask is that, or part of the point here is that the water didn't go into the sewer, and therefore wouldn't be a sewage usage.
Right.
Not, I mean, that's a, it's a valid point, I guess, to your point, how do you know how much that is, you don't. Put a sewer use charge of twelve hundred and nine dollars for a month?
Yeah, it's a quarter.
Let's go work, sorry. That's less crazy than I.
It's less, and, and what was the date of that? What the usage?
Oh, I see, okay, so they're looking for an abatement to the sewer portion, not the water.
Yeah.
Correct. I still think it's tough, I mean, it's, I really feel for all these abatement requests, because I understand it's, uh, no one plans for the equipment failures and everything, but there's also no way, to Chris's point, to say this was the amount that was lost, um, or that didn't end up in the sewer or whatever, and we've had similar requests, whether it's, um, you know, sprinklers or pools or, or something of that nature, and it's, unless you can have documentation, um, we really, I think, open ourselves up to that precedent of then we're just gonna start abating everything, and all the other payers are going to have to pick that up.
Okay, that's, you know, if we pick a, you know, abate at fifty percent, again, that's precedent setting, setting.
Yeah, I mean, I think if we were to get confirmation on the size of the water heater, I don't think it'd help very much, 'cause I'm sure it's small dollars, but if we abated the amount of water that the tank size was, in the theory that that tank flooded, I mean, you know, fifty to ninety gallons at the max, so I'm sure that doesn't help much, but it seems like a a reasonable adjustment to me, on the very low side. It doesn't say the size of the water, we'd have to get that information, but.
Yeah, I, I don't know what their normal usage is, to determine what the difference is between their normal and the water heater.
Well, and.
I'm just saying, if the water heater, if the water heater broke and leaked all over the place, and, you know, obviously, when they shut the water off stops that, but if you're just saying the water heater broke, whatever, the fifty gallons that it normally holds, we could.
But even, even that, if it's, if it's starting to empty, it's just gonna continue refilling, right?
Right.
And if they didn't shut it off.
Yeah, right, so I'm, I'm, so what I'm saying is, you know, we're not, I, I'm suggesting that we don't give them abatement on everything, because, you know, we have no way of telling that, but the, the fifty gallons that was originally in it that leaked out, theoretically, I mean, we would know that that wouldn't have gone into the sewer. The rest, we, I, I agree, we have no way of determining how much would have, you know, gone in, how much the normal would have been, but if the water heater broke and leaked, the fifty gallons that was in it, that would not go in the sewer. Again, fifty gallons is probably nothing in comparison to what the cost is, but it's reasonable to make that argument to me.
It looks like we're talking eight thousand nine hundred for water, eight thousand nine hundred thirty-six cubic feet of water was used during that quarter?
Yeah. So, again, it'd be minimal, but.
So, if we do, a- and again, I guess this is to Chris's point, at what rate do we credit? Six seventy, seven sixty-one, eight thirty-one, eleven fourteen, how do we determine all that stuff? So I don't think the board has the expertise to get into that at this point, so, but I agree, it seems like something, but.
I, I mean, I'm, I'm willing to go back to the resident and ask that they try and provide proof of the amount that was.
I mean, they could, they could very well have pictures.
That was a leak that didn't go in, um, again, not in, not assuming that just, that that is going to be taken as enough evidence to actually move forward with the abatement, but as opposed to just denying the request now, just going back to ask them to provide more information or proof of the amount that we could further consider, I'd be willing to do that.
Yeah.
I mean, I feel, like I said, I feel terrible for the residents, but I also feel like then we are, and I appreciate trying to help them, any resident, but I think it opens us up to another slippery slope, and DPW opened to a slippery slope of what's documentation to prove what size tank it was in the first place, and, you know, to one of your points, like, how do you know that it was full when it started leaking or not full, or, um, then obviously it continued to try to fill and it wasn't there, so that we're not even considering. Alex, I appreciate your point as far as like, what's that, that fifty gallons, I think, um, but again, I think then it becomes a avenue for constantly trying to provide more and more and more documentation that may or may not exist, and.
I agree.
Um, I think oftentimes DPW doesn't have the easiest time getting into, um, homes to try to work with residents to, to verify the information, so um, we're really at the behest of, of the information that's provided to us.
No, I, I don't disagree, my, my only thought in, um, looking for that is just, Chris's memo states, due to lack of proof, and I don't know if they were asked for any additional documentation, so again, just giving them an opportunity to. an opportunity to provide more information, and if they can't, or what, if they do, then we just make a decision based on if we're if that's acceptable proof or not.
Yeah, and, and I'm reading here the reasons. I'm not sure what he's actually, that person is actually asking for. Do they want the whole sewer charge of twelve hundred and nine dollars credited to normal usage? I don't know what that means.
Well, we'd have, that's part of what we'd have to figure out, is we'd have to go back and look at what their normal sewer usage is to figure out how much to abate, cause that's what they're looking for is.
Yeah.
The water went down his cellar drain outside the building, you know? Um, so there was really, it's not really a sewer charge as far as I'm concerned. I'm looking at my own situation in my cellar, so in other words, you know, yeah, we go down a drain and we go out underneath the backyard someplace and, and empty into a drywall. So, you know, yeah, there would be water running all day long, but to calculate a storage, uh, charge off of that, um, seemed to me, well, a little bit stretched, I guess is what I'm gonna say, but at any rate, that's based upon my own, my own situation and my own cellar, so.
To make your point, okay, sorry.
Were you gonna say something? Uh, you know, to play devil's advocate, it's like, what if I ran my water in my yard, what in my yard? That's a sewer charge, one and the same. So I understand that his water leak, it was, and he's being charged as a sewer, but he'd have to provide, we'd have to send it back and say, you provide this documentation to prove what portion of the twelve oh nine you want credited.
Well, this is true.
Cause I can't see where he's looking for, he's looking for all of it here, cause he doesn't have any amount down here that he's looking for.
Can I also ask, I had thought that in order to request an abatement, that bill had to be paid. Is that only for certain ones?
The bill is technically not due till December second.
Okay.
Um, a lot of times we don't receive the requests until after the bills are due, so we make sure that they're paid, but in this case, we wouldn't have forced them to pay it early since it's not due yet.
Okay, is that, is it standard practice to not have the ab- abatement application till it's been paid though? Even though if it's, it's not due until?
There's nothing in the policy, it's just most of the time, the ti- the way the timing works, so it ends up coming in after
Afterwards, okay.
the bill payment, the bill was due, um, but in this case, it's not due until next week.
Okay.
Just, I mean, reading this, it's, the request is that the sewage charge be credited to the amount that is their normal charge. So, one, we'd have to get their normal charge and compare that to what this is, and they're asking the difference of that be abated, is what they're asking, yeah.
But we don't have that.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just clarifying.
Right.
Yeah.
I don't have enough here to, to move forward with an abatement approval, so I, I think we need to either, my opinion, either deny this as presented or send it back and request more specifics and information.
If, sorry, if I, I have a question.
Go ahead.
If we deny it as presented, can they resubmit and for, uh, with additional information?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah.
Through the, through the chair. I, I would recommend that they provide four quarters of prior bills to look at what their average rate usage is, figure out what the loss is, and then you could calcu- you could come up with a, a reasonable calculation from that of what their normal usage is. The issue here, this is rental property, um, and we don't know if.
Ooh.
So, but again, we can get, get more information as well.
So rental, so is this the owner or the tenant?
The owner.
The owner.
Does the owner live there?
I do not.
They do not.
Yeah.
Doesn't.
No, they have a different address.
Okay.
So, I, and this is me personally, not taking any of that into consideration. I would be hesitant to approve period, just based on the information that we have, um, because again, I'll reiterate, I think it's setting us up as a Board of Public Works, a very slippery slope to get into the weeds of things that we have no business being in the weeds of. We were provided information from the, the, um, property owner, and we were pri- provided information from the department head, and that's that. Um, and I feel like this going back and forth just is, uh, so I would be hesitant, even if we, um, said, oh, we want all this other information, I would still be hesitant to approve. I would be more comfortable to deny as presented and let the chips fall where it may go.
Yes.
I, I would agree.
Yeah. And if he wants to move further with it in the future, that's up the individual.
And resubmit with additional documentation, yeah.
Uh, I'll make a motion.
Sure.
I'll make a motion that the Port of, the Board of Public Works deny the request for a water abatement.
Sewer abatement.
Uh, sewer, sewer abatement for, I don't think we have an address on here.
No.
No, you won't.
No, okay, sewer abatement for twelve, right now, for twelve hundred and nine dollars and ninety-three cents.
As presented.
As presented.
Yeah, just as presented.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Alright, roll call Alex.
Alright.
Second eye.
Second eye.
Next and I.
One more drawing. Alright, um, we are gonna move into the.
We convene as a Board of, if you will, are we moving right into?
Yeah, we're, we're, but we're joint hosted, so, but yes, we'll put our select board hats back on. Um, so we will move back into the street acceptance request, um, so as everybody knows, we had the citizens petition that was submitted to call a special town meeting, um, which we have the certified signatures for the special town meeting, as well as all of the signatures required for three separate articles for the streets, um, street acceptance for Arrowhead Way, Woodside, the portion of Woodside Avenue, and Pioneer Circle. Um, so that special town meeting has been set for January fifth, so to move forward in that process, um, we need to have this discussion tonight, um, to lay out the ways, choose whether or not to lay out the ways for, um, these three streets. And this, um, I should know, even though it's a citizens petition, we are still required to go through, um, the same process, um, per MGL to lay out the ways, have the public hearings, et cetera. Um, so that's what we're doing tonight, is the first step in that process to, um, vote to lay out the ways and refer to the planning board. So I think, um, and then also as part of this, I know Harry, you had brought up wanting to have a, kind of a discussion on the outstanding items that, um, were part of the reason why the, the board voted not to move forward with these ones previously.
Yes, I want, uh, 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 the reason I brought that up was, is because I wanted the town to understand, the citizens to understand that some of the issues that they brought up does not completely fall under the street acceptance policy. And some of that can be part of the subdivision policy, and we have a planning board member here, correct me if I'm wrong. So that was why, so, uh, if we send this back, then we'll get more, more clarity as to what is or isn't outstanding, what has been done, and then if there are still complaints about, well, the pump station, I don't, I've heard from one residence, well, I'm not, I wouldn't approve the, the way, the, uh, road acceptance because the pump station, we've gotta pay for it, and he, and the builder should be paying for it. Well, does that fall under the street acceptance rule? And so that's why we have them here, if they are, can I answer that, or?
Yeah, so we, we, we're, we're talking about three specific streets, and in one case, a portion of a street. Um, and as we have noted in here, there's, there's no pump stations involved with any of these, the streets or portions that we're looking to.
And that's my point, that, that's what I'm trying to get at, is for the citizens of this town to understand that pump stations right now do not fall under street acceptance.
We're not talking about that. They, they do, we're just, they're just not involved with these three in particular. There are no pump stations on the, the roads.
Uh, can I get clarity through the chair from a member? Does a pump station fall under the street acceptance policy?
Pump stations are part of the infrastructure that is accepted along these streets.
So.
And all, and all, all three of these, uh, requests are using pump stations.
Correct, but there's no pump station that's on any of the streets or portions of streets that we're being asked to lay out.
So.
It was accepted in phase one.
Phase one.
Woodside has a pump station in phase one, right, which is already.
These roads have no pump stations that are part of the acceptance of the road.
No.
Correct.
That is correct.
But if they did, if there were a pump station, it would be part of the street acceptance. The pump station at Woodside that is on Woodside now was accepted when Woods, that section of Woodside was accepted as a town road last year.
Correct.
So pump stations go hand in hand with road acceptances. They're lumped into the road acceptance when applicable.
Yes.
Yes. Correct.
But these don't have any pump stations on them, so for these three roads, there's no pump station.
Right. Right, and that was the point I was trying to get at, is that just cause there's a pump station doesn't mean you shut down the process of road acceptance, if it's not involved.
No.
Yes, that's what I was.
Correct.
Okay.
Um, I, I guess, just to start the conversation, we have, um, some documentation that kind of summarizes a few of the things that were brought up at the last meeting. Um, the first paragraph is kind of applicable to all three of these, where there was concern brought up that some of the conditions in the engineering reports that we had as of the public hearings, there were unresolved issues. Um, that, there were some there that said there, there might have been waivers for some of the conditions, um, but there just, there wasn't any documentation that stated that those had been met as of the, the hearing. So that was, for me, one of my concerns is unresolved conditions for, for the phase.
You, you can tell me if I'm wrong, but all, that's why we went to Chris to make sure, we, we basically said, Chris, I want you to give us the blessing on all four roads and make sure there's no unresolved conditions.
But Chris isn't the, not talking about the Turner report, I'm talking about Quinn Engineering's inspection reports.
At the last report, we got all of the conditions have been satisfied.
Not according to the ones that we had, cause I, I have my list here for Arrowhead Way, there are street trees and granite inlets were still unresolved, Pioneer Circle, street trees, granite inlets, Woodside Avenue, streetlights, street trees, granite inlets, and there was one that had a couple of areas where they were talking about seeding with, um, erosion that was still, because the, the grass wasn't germinating, that he had marked as unresolved as of October tenth.
And that was resolved at the meeting that we sent, the, that we, how do I say this? We resolved at our, at our meeting with conditions of like street trees, you can't put them in now, they're not going in until, um, the, the spring. That was all resolved as part of our recommendation to the select board.
But that's my other, again, speaking for myself, my other concern is that it's not, there's no waiver for that, and there's no amendment to the conditions of the subdivision, so there's nothing that's gonna hold him accountable.
Ten percent is.
It's not, but that's not in here anywhere. I'm, I've got the list of waivers, I actually went through and saw that for Bryce, Bryce Estates, there is a waiver for the streetlights.
Correct.
Um, which is not, again, documented in the Quinn Engineering report, it was still listed as unresolved. He said there might be a waiver. But there's nothing in the waivers for the trees or the granite inlets, which is, per the subdivision rules and regulations, requires a waiver that has to be documented properly and filed with the site plan.
We have granted that waiver for the granite head, headstone.
But where is it?
Was that part of the letters that Chris sent and you sent? Was that in that letter that you sent us to the board?
Yes, cause Chris went out, cause there was some, uh, stormwater, um, if you wanna call it asphalt that was in, that was believed to be not correct. They were corrected, and that was part of Chris going out on Thursday and reviewing all three roads to make sure, every, he came up with the list, don't get me wrong, he came up with the list, and we said, is this the list that we need on top of what Quinn had come back with, which is the street trees, and basically had said, these have to be resolved by Friday, otherwise we are not going to give the select board our recommendation to put these on the horn article. And if I'm not mistaken, Chris went on Thursday, verified that all of the items on his list were completed.
I think, yeah, go ahead. My, my concern was that these items may be completed, but there was no formal agreement between the developer and the, and the town that these, that per the, the, um, site plan, that there is no formal agreement. So, we were told that, oh, we don't need, I don't need to plant street trees, I can just, it was suggested that instead of planting street trees, I contribute a hundred dollars to, uh, the open space fund or whatever. Now, we have in front of us that there's a whole lot of money that is contractually legally still owed to the town, so there was no, absolutely no documentation, no formal agreement, that this money was going to be contributed to any sort of open space fund other than it was suggested that that's an option instead of doing street trees. And my concern, my concern is, we have here that there's outstanding money in, for Arrowhead and Woodside both that, that is legally per MGL required, that is still outstanding.
To me, is, is there anything still owed by Klee on those two? Cause I thought we were.
So not with regard to the two hundred and fifty dollar per lot fee, but I had sent a couple emails to the board that he is not replenishing those two fifty-three G accounts.
Yep.
And I have outstanding invoices that, um, from Quinn for the street acceptance requests and insufficient funds to pay them. And he's been notified, um, at least two to three times via email, and I've not received a response. This actually dated back to when Delia was still here, and she sent the initial communication.
And, and I actually had a question, I was going through the subdivision decision for Bryce, and there's a condition in here that says the applicant shall contribute fifty dollars at the time of sale of each unit within the subdivision to a homeowners association trust fund to be managed by Bryce Lemon Homeowners Association. Has that been done?
No, no, he did, the homeowners association until seventy-five percent of the properties you sold are managed by the developer, he holds the, he holds homeowner, if you wanna call it, accounts and control of that homeowners association. Until, if I'm not mistaken, I think it's seventy-five percent, if I remember the number right, then he can turn it over to a homeowners association per the, the subdivision, um, conditions for Bryce Lemon.
Right, but this, this says it's going to a trust fund to be managed by the Bryce Lemon Homeowners Association. So, to me, it's still, whether he controls it right now, or the residents, it's turned over to the residents, he's still supposed to be submitting fifty dollars.
He is the homeowners association at this point.
Right, but is he contributing fifty dollars for each of those sold homes to that trust fund?
As far, I mean, I guess we could ask for an account, but I haven't, not asked for an account, because it's not our.
Exactly.
Then it should.
These are the, these are the questions that I have concerns with, because historically, he has, we, we had to chase him down for the, the open space fees, the two hundred and fifty dollars per, per property. So, the conditions here, I, I just, we don't have all of the checks that these are met, and as soon as we accept these streets, there's, there's no recourse to go after him for that, because they're not in, properly documented. I mean, even in, for, for waivers, looking at MGL chapter forty-one, section eighty-one R, which is for waiver of strict compliance with rules and regulations, it states the planning board shall endorse such conditions on the plan to which they relate or set them forth in a separate instrument attached thereto, to which references made on such plan and which shall for the purpose of the subdivision control law be deemed to be part of the plan. So there's conditions that have been waived
Correct.
that are not filed properly with the plan, so that to me, they don't, they never happened. And we have no reason, no way to go back and hold him accountable to meeting those conditions.
Yep, and the granite, I guess if we wanna get into that, one of your town employees authorized him to do that without coming to the planning board, so we don't really wanna go down that path, do we? Cause I'm frustrated about that, and I've been frustrated. Has it been resolved?
Then, then that's something that can be discussed offline. I guess the point I'm trying to make is there's an MGL process that we don't have for all the conditions or the waivers that have been agreed to for these.
Through the chair, is that, is that in subdivision regs?
This is, this is mass general law, and it's also referenced in our subdivision.
Right, but does it reference street acceptance in there, I guess is my question? Does, because he owns the, the homeowners association, which is the individual mortgagees who hold the houses, does that prevent the town from approving a road acceptance when the relationship is between him and the homeowners association, so?
This, this is part of the subdivision control, which is the planning board's purview to ensure is being followed.
Uh, that's not my question. My question is, is that, you said it's a subdivision law?
It's the subdivision control, which is their.
Right, but does that involve street acceptance? How?
Because the streets and the, the conditions of the subdivision are. Because the streets and the the conditions of the subdivision are, fall under the planning board.
Condition of the building of the subdivision.
Not of the street. Streets complete.
The street is part of the subdivision.
So I'm curious as to how, I'm not saying it's not part of, what I'm saying is we are here to address not the subdivision, but the street acceptance.
Correct.
And mass general law does say that if the DPW and planning board decide that everything they asked for is complete, they then, from my understanding, and we made legal on this, they then get to re, get to put it to the town for a vote. So I'm trying to figure out how street acceptance keeps that mass general law from being enforced.
It's, it, again, this is, this is, this is, this is my, I I've spent so much time looking at this
I think we need a legal opinion.
because of these conversations and the the streets and the conditions that have to be met with the streets that were being asked to accept, they're part of a phased subdivision decision, which I I will also acknowledge, looking through, I I I made myself a map of Bryce Estates.
Mm-hmm.
And mapped out the phases. I will acknowledge that he is following the phase outside of Lindsay Lane, which should have been part of phase one. He is following the phase. I I'm not, I I can't say I I understand why the portion of Woodside that's being asked for acceptance was phase three and not the end of the the phase, but that's not, neither here nor there. Um, but it's, it's in the subdivision decision conditions that the road needs to meet and we're being asked to accept portions of the phased subdivision for the town to take on as a public road. And there are certain conditions within the subdivision control law, which is the purview of the select board to enforce, which is mass general law that have not been met. So could the town move forward and lay out the ways and it go to town meeting and accept it? If we vote on that, yes. But we would not be, in my opinion, there are conditions of mass general law that are not being met that we would essentially by voting for it, say, you don't have to follow mass general law in all of these conditions.
I I disagree. I don't think that's what it says at all. Uh uh I I do not think that. And part of my issue also is, let me find what I'm looking for here.
General, here is something if I may. I just wanted to share that Seth and I had met with town council a couple of weeks ago along with the town clerk um in preparation for receiving a citizen's petition and town council made it very clear the board is not obligated to lay out the ways if you still do not feel comfortable doing so. You do have to place them on the warrant.
Mm-hmm.
They would go to town meeting. However, the vote of town meeting would not be legally binding because unless the board takes the first step to lay out the ways, then the process doesn't continue. But he said you are not obligated to lay out the ways if you do not feel that the conditions of street acceptance have been met.
And and I.
Do we, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Do we know exactly now what is outstanding? Cause I thought everything was resolved.
I I think.
I mean, as of today.
And 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 I I would like to clarify, the DPW director had a list. It may not necessarily be the same list as Quinn Engineering, who's the one inspecting the roads for everything that needs to have the checklist. So a- and while I understand, you know, Chris made the the request that we use the um granite asphalt for the the inlets instead of the granite curbing. Uh I again, that that's, that's a specific condition that has no waiver for it on the site plan. I I drove through Woodside on my way here tonight. Phase one and phase two have granite inlets. Phase three does not. So even in the same subdivision, we know it's not the same. It's, that doesn't make any sense to me.
Two different DPW directors.
It should be consistent. Well, and Leah's made an earlier comment, which I agree with, that something like that should not be at the whim of whoever is in the DPW director's seat. We have subdivision rules and regulations for a reason and unless the condition is waived or changed or modified for the entire subdivision, I I don't understand it.
If nobody comes to the planning board to indicate they're gonna make the change, we're at the whim of somebody doing an inspection, which, and that's what Quinn came up with and acknowledged just about and acknowledged to us what was going on.
Uh, through the chair, did Quinn Engineering give you a report to saying everything that they found a problem with was completed? Did they state it to you?
They they, I remember right, the the street trees were still an outstanding item. And the lack of granite curves was the um outstanding item. If I remember the report, I'd have to look back to verify. I don't.
Those were the two big ones for all three of these streets.
And then I think some of it was the the grass germinating, which could be a a timing thing. I I wanna acknowledge it could be a timing thing and I haven't driven, I haven't driven through since when the developer was here. He attested to the fact that grass was growing there. I did not drive through to confirm. Um, and I don't know if there had been any follow-up communication from.
I I talked to Quinn. The concern, at at least from my perspective as an engineer, was the grass that's germinating is on the property owner's side of the called sidewalk or or street. The concern that I had with Kevin, I talked between the sidewalk and the curb, is that grass in good shape? Cause that's where your erosion happens. That's where I worry about the water. If it's still not germinating on the owner's side of the sidewalk, take care of that in the spring. Not worried about that. I'm worried about water and erosion. And Kevin indicated that that portion was fine. It was the grass that wasn't germinating on the, call it the homeowner's side of the sidewalk. I I think the board discussed that and we said if that's taken care of in the spring and got it into meeting minutes and a requirement, we were fine with that moving forward just to, because it wasn't affecting, it wasn't affecting the erosion or potential water flow onto the street.
And I guess I would feel feel more comfortable having that formally documented as an attachment to subdivision rules and regs just for legal clarity, that this is an agreement between the planning board and the developer, that this is going to happen in the spring if it's not happened by, I I, we run into this, well, it's in the meeting minutes, but there's, then it's a he said, she said, and nobody holds them accountable. I think one way to try to hold any anybody accountable for this is is through the street acceptance, just because like we're accepting them and that's essentially giving a stamp to the subdivision that, hey, this is good to go, where there's a whole lot of of questions still on the documentation on the subdivision side. And there's no official updates to the subdivision through waivers, rules and regs. That then when we get staff in that changes, they have nothing to reference. So they go or don't go, but if we can work to train staff to go to these documents that are easily accessible and consistently updated with documentation legally, then that's going to prevent a lot of this.
Mm-hmm.
Uh.
Norm, I'm struggling how I change the conditions on an already approved definitive subdivision to indicate that there's been changes at the final of the road. I'm struggling. Cause legally, our minutes have always been the way we've kept any agreements between developers, not just this developer, but any developer on a subdivision. If something's come up, you're correct, if there's a waiver, that's a mo, would be considered a minor modification to the subdivision and that would have to go through the process.
Right, there's there's waivers.
Minor modification.
Correct.
Even at a meeting tomorrow for that matter.
But there there's nothing in here that has any, that specifies minor versus major modifications. If it's a modification to the plan, then that has to follow the process that a a subdivision plan would.
Whether it's a minor or a major modification, isn't the jurisdiction of the planning board alone.
With review, public hearings. Correct, but but if you're changing a condition of the approved subdivision, that falls under MGL and has to go through the same process. If it's a waiver to the subdivision rules or regulations, which these trees, is my understanding, is is in the subdivision rules and regs. So that's something that can go under a waiver. But it still has to be documented on the plan that there was a change to the waiver. So we have recourse to go back.
And to follow up, even on the curbing side, the developer should know that that's in the definitive plans. And so if the developer wants to do different curbing and DPW is in favor of that different curbing, developer well knows the process is to go to planning boards to seek that as a waiver and not, and and so again, it's not, I don't want to put staff on the line when there's a process and and I'm not putting planning board on the line either. I think very much that this is, we're, I'm I'm hoping to try to empower planning board to to do your job with the documentation and provide the proper recourse when needed for these develop, for these, for the developers and property owners as well. But and all of our residents, because ultimately it comes to a tax cost of all of us.
It's it's a learning experience for, call it staff, that if this comes up again, refer back to the original owners of that of that plan, which have been us. So it's a learning. I I I'm not, please, I'm not putting blame on Chris or anything. I'm just thinking it's a learning experience and if the developer comes to you and asks a question and it's not in your purview, refer it back. That's that's all I'm trying to do from the learning process. I have no way blaming Chris for this because to your point, the developer should have known that and and going back to the planning board. So a learning is, anything comes up like this again, just refer it back to the board and let the planning board handle it. As for trees and stuff like that, I'm not sure, cause I I I guess you could call it a waiver. Cause we're still getting the amount of trees, but there's a financial implication of not putting in trees.
That that to me would constitute a waiver because it's not trees. You're asking for financial compensation for it. So that's a change to.
In Rico.
The subdivision rules and regulations. There's nothing in there that states the financial aspect instead of planting trees.
I I guess, Norm, you could tell me if I'm offbeat, but in some cases, the the definitive plan says like one tree every hundred and fifty feet. Well, in actuality, when it comes to actually putting them in, that doesn't work out. So there's gotta be some negotiated movement. Um, and that's where the board comes in with their best judgment and say, okay, maybe this property owner wants two trees. This one doesn't have any. So, and I think that's what we were trying to do at our meeting. We were trying to come up with a solution that we could get all the trees that we asked for. And if there was no place to put them, because A, um what we've seen in the past, and this was on the first Bryce Lemon, is that the um developer went and planted trees and literally got into physical arguments with owners on trees being planted. So we thought from the standpoint of the soon homeowners, if they want them, great, because he's, see, these trees go in after the houses are built, not before. And that's a discussion that the boards had internally that maybe wanted to do this at the beginning. But you run the risk of construction destroying them. So then we're back to square one. So our point was, is during this um final cleanup of before we made the recommendation to the select board, is that what can we do to make the residents happy and make sure the developer um takes care of his financial obligations of the trees? And that's where we came up with, anybody that wanted trees in the area, fine, we'll put them in. If they don't want them, we need to come up with, say, there's thirty-two trees that have to go in there. Sixteen can be planted, the other sixteen cannot. So what can we do to make sure the town breaks even on this? And that's where the hundred dollars per tree, if it's not being planted, would go back to a fund. Um, I don't think that got documented in a change to the conditions or waiver. It was a discussion, it was part of the negotiation of the subdivision. It's in the minutes, I guarantee that, but it's it's not.
And if I bet, it was presented to us that it was a suggestion.
Oh, no, 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 no.
So, but that's, but that's what I'm telling you, that it, that's how it was presented to us in a meeting, that it was a suggestion that instead of planting trees, a hundred dollars to the open, to an open space fund would would suffice. It was a suggestion. I think my concern was very much that we know how these suggestions play out. We, I I I I go back to what I had just.
Yeah.
So that was that we had no formal, there was no waiver, formal communication, documentation, anything, that this was a an agreement between parties, planning board and developer, that this is going to happen.
Yeah.
And also not that it's an easy, I don't know what the cost of trees and I don't know how that compares to a hundred dollars, but not that it's an easy off of, oh, well, here I can put, if we're gonna say the number is thirty-two, I'm gonna put thirty-two hundred dollars in an account because I don't wanna deal with doing trees that are gonna cost two hundred dollars for the tree and the labor to 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 put in. I don't know, but that again was, I don't know, I didn't look as as thoroughly as Jen did at the plans. I don't know if the plans showed trees on the properties. I know, I know.
Oh, they do.
If I'm expecting trees on my property, then I'm not gonna, you know, um, and so that was another concern as well. So that's where I was coming at that piece from.
No, I was just gonna say, those minutes have not been, I was not at that meeting, so those minutes don't exist yet.
Uh, question.
And we also don't have a recording of that meeting. So as of right now, we have no documentation of the discussion from that October fourteenth meeting. So I think that's part of the problem too.
No recording, huh?
No, they didn't catch audio that night, so there's no recording either. So I.
We gotta stop that. It's gotta be fixed. I'm 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 just, I'm speaking up at thirty thousand feet.
Just like, no.
This has gotta A be fixed because now, this is the second or third we've had. Anyhow, I'm sorry, I'm just getting off on a tangent.
Uh, question, do we need a waiver if a homeowner doesn't want a tree?
Go ahead, Harry. It's, it, with respect, Harry, it's not what the homeowner wants. It's the subdivision rules and regulations.
No, if the, if the builder wants to put a hundred and the homeowner says, get off my plant, my property, I'm gonna shoot you.
In which case, that's where the planning board has said, as an alternative, if they don't want them, the developer can contribute, in this case, they exceed a hundred dollars per tree to an open space fund. The problem is that that's not documented anywhere. So if this street gets accepted, we have nothing to go back and say, you didn't plant forty-seven trees, you owe us forty-seven hundred dollars. There's nothing there to hold him accountable for paying the town that money. Because there, it's not legally documented with the plan.
We just need to, I guess, is this a letter to the select board, Norm, of all of our agreements that we'd stand at at that night to make sure everything was complete?
Yes.
I think that's what.
For me, it's it's making sure that MGL is being followed. Eighty-one R, that waivers for subdivision rules and regulations are properly documented the way they should be.
You've got a subdivision regulation.
I know.
If if that doesn't follow MGL, I think this town is.
But what I'm saying is, for example, the trees, the hundred dollar per tree, that is not in the subdivision rules and regulations. That was a waiver decided on by the planning board that has not been documented with the plan in this case. If it was part of the subdivision rules and regs, then that would be a different story, but it's not.
Wouldn't be there.
Um, I I feel like all I've heard tonight is subdivision builder, subdivision builder, subdivision builder. I haven't heard about the citizens yet and the impact it's going to have on them. That's what I haven't heard. I'm always get the feeling that the board has not have, not the concern for the citizens they should have.
If, my understanding was that the developer is on, um, is responsible for road maintenance until the streets are accepted through town meeting, via town meeting, not just up until the point that they're presented to the board or presented to planning board or anything. They need to be approved at town meeting and legally accepted.
At town meeting.
At town meeting, um, in order for the town to take over control. So I think there, I think for the residents, it's still the developer's responsibility to maintain the roads and it, just as they, the developer has been maintaining the road up through this point. And so I think as town, I wanna make sure that for all the residents of the town, not just the people living on those roads, that the, that the roads are of good standing and not going to end up costing a lot more on the maintenance side or construction side or anything of that nature. As well as ensuring that all of our funds are, at 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 minimum, that all of our funds are legally collected. Um.
So, I I'm gonna ask, because this is the third time I've sat here now discussing this. And we need to leave here as a board with an itemized list of what is gonna be required so that departments, committees, builders know exactly where they stand. Because this can't continue. We can't keep putting our citizens in this type of situation.
Harry, I, I a hundred. Harry, I I a hundred percent agree.
Well, we should have done this the last time.
Where I disagree is that that is not the purview of the select board to come up with what needs to be done. That's the purview of the planning board.
But we keep changing that.
We didn't. They provided us with documentation. They provided us with the most recent engineering inspect inspection reports. That said there were unresolved issues and those were not addressed. So for me. This is a go back to the planning board, review those inspection reports, ensure that appropriate documentation and waivers are in place for those items. And if those are all complete, then we can bring it back and talk about moving forward. That's my opinion. But it's up to the planning board to go through everything that needs to be done and make sure that. They're the ones identifying it. Like I for me, I'm I'm frustrated that we're as a select board. We're the ones pointing out that there's unresolved conditions and it's not the planning board. Why why don't we have an inspection report that just has straight resolved for every single condition? Why why is why is the planning board making a recommendation with unresolved, not resolved?
Let me ask a question, Jen. You talk about these reports. I'm confused on why the select board is looking over reports that is handled by the planning board because. I thought the select board asked the planning board for a recommendation and that's it. Is there something I'm missing here?
No, that that you provide the but I also as a resident, I'm looking at all the information to see. Has the due diligence been done? And I personally found holes. So I'm taking that back in my role as a select board representing the town to say, there's unresolved issues. We're missing money. There's conditions that aren't here that could end up costing the town money if we accept these roads. We need to do a little bit more work.
Then let me ask this. Next time the select board, and this is just my opinion, I'm not speaking for Norm or anybody else on my board. Instead of asking the planning board for a recommendation, ask us for a report, ask us for something. You ask us for a recommendation. And if I'm not mistaken, three of those roads don't need don't follow the the road acceptance policy. Only one did, and that was Lindsay. The rest were. From previous before the before the condition went in and that doesn't need it uh. And and this is where I'm not, this is where an attorney has to get in. Mass General Law says. It basically you lay the way as you ask us to make sure everything's okay. It goes to town meeting, town votes on it, we make a favorable decision, that's it. It doesn't come up for debate.
But but where I'm questioning, again, speaking for myself personally, is in my opinion. The conditions weren't met and the the planning board should not have provided a favorable recommendation because there's missing things.
And I if I can piggyback on Jen, I had a number of residents reach out to me with concerns saying that they felt that there were. That they saw planning board meeting or were in planning board meeting or had. Concerns that there were unmet conditions and were concerned with the favorable recommendations. So that's why I asked to look at the reports to see where things were.
And I guess that's my concern. You we talk about, well, there were unmet conditions. Explain to me or tell me or list to me what unmet unmet conditions they talked to you about. And that's why I think this board needs to put forth and say, this is what we wanna see.
That's not our purview. That's the planning board's purview to look at the reports.
If we don't make a list of everything you talked about.
They're they're in there. They're in the reports. They're all in the the public hearing documents.
Like I said, I've been here three times and now this is hearing about this waiver or that waiver and we've never discussed it. So.
Are we able to make public comment? No, we're not accepting public comment right now. Thank you.
So if we go, how do we get them to tell us what we want is my question? You say it's in there. Well, we're bringing up a lot of stuff, so how do we get them to tell us what this board wants?
Again, it's not what this board wants. It's what it's it's not. It's what is in MGL. What they're required to do to meet those rules and regulations. So I would empower this the planning board to go back and look at all the documentation, all of the inspection reports. And ensure that everything is resolved. And not bring it back to the select board with a favorable recommendation until all those conditions are met. I also have concern with saying, well, you need to, we'll we'll give you a favorable recommendation if you do X Y Z by this date. Because if we vote, okay, sure, eh when when that is not. If we're expected to vote positively on something with a date to a of completion after that vote. Uh uh again, there's nothing there that's holding that person accountable. So for me. It it's not going to be a favorable vote until the conditions are met as of the date that I'm being asked to make that vote.
That's why the vote at the planning board was a conditional vote. That if that report from Chris Koloski was not back by end of business on Friday. Then the recommendation that we were gonna have Tamika send the planning board from, I'm sorry, to the select board on Monday would have been unfavorable.
Then I again, I would ask why the why the if if you're if you're going solely based on Director Koloski's. List, is he cross referencing what he needs to with the Quinn engineering reports? Because a again, whose responsibility is that? It's two different things. Does he have a different punch list from? From the engineering inspection reports?
Engineering inspection um outside of the trees, Norm, that I thought. There was no other issues that he had the trees. Cuz the the money thing is not part of an engineering report. The the trees and the granite curbs were the only unresolved issues that I remember off the top of my head. Everything else was resolved. On those reports. I'll have to look at them. I I'm shooting.
No, you're you're correct. There other than the seating that we had talked about.
Correct.
And and the streetlights were our properly in the in the waivers.
That was in the waiver, correct.
But those were those were two consistent things for both of these subdivisions that were still unresolved.
Correct, and we resolved them in that meeting that we had on Tuesday with the developer and the planning board.
But it's not documented in the waivers.
And there's no minutes for the meeting.
Well, again, I not the clerk will I'll we'll have to, I can't answer that question right here.
Like I said, I'm just.
I'm a little concerned about that myself.
If I may, I will attest to all the grass growing on all streets, cuz I drove by there Saturday and Sunday. So eh so that issue is resolved.
We.
But do I need to write a formal letter to the board saying I saw grass growing?
That's that's our problem, Harry. That's the plan. I just, Jen, I understand what you're saying. I get it. I'm just don't think we, I think what we did is as part of the motion. Um, that cuz we had a formal motion that these items had to be done and one of those motions was the trees. All that stuff was in a formal motion. So was that put into the the waivers and the conditions? No, but it was done as a formal motion of the planning board. It's recorded.
Not what MGL states you have to do. A motion doesn't mean is not legally binding according to MGL.
So anything you guys threw up there in motion is not legally binding?
We have a motion, make a minor modification to a subdivision. Can we vote that? That's not.
If it's a waiver to a subdivision rules and regs.
Minor modification, not a waiver, a minor modification.
If you can provide me documentation on what a minor modification is and how that's different and doesn't apply to a waiver. I I mean, to me, this is clear. The trees are subdivision rules and regs. You you have a a planned modification or you have a waiver.
And the granite curbing too.
And the granite curbing.
The trees, I I would agree, would probably have to be a waiver. Because just because of the language that.
Okay, I'm good.
Okay, the granite curbs and and that sort of thing, no.
They're in there as well. There's.
That can be considered a minor modification, not a waiver.
It's pretty explicit in in the subdivision rules and regs what those catch base in inlets are.
A minor modification is strictly in the jurisdiction of the planning board. And we can decide what is and what is not a minor modification. We do not have to justify.
I I I will I will agree. There's nothing, I was reading through the case notes for waivers. This the planning board does not have to provide a list of waivers or justifications for waivers. I acknowledge that. But it's still a waiver and it has to be documented as such. And that's my big my concern. If there's waivers that need to be done, they have not been done.
One, straight trees only. We'll take care of that.
And I I think my other concern before I I forget again is regarding the woodside Ave piece. Again, we pointed out that, eh again, acknowledging it is following the subdivision phases. It's phase three. However, we now have public, private, public, where you're gonna have construction vehicles. Has the the planning board um asked that construction all go through one entrance of that subdivision? While construction's ongoing?
No, we have not.
I I just, my concern is that you've got construction vehicles and I know we talked about they're not driving. Backhoes and whatnot up and down the streets. They're gonna be hauled in. However, you've got significant more um. Road traffic because of and heavy equipment because of all the construction. That has the the potential to damage the public roads that we would then be responsible for. So I'm not necessarily, again, this is the phase phase three. This was the approved phase three. So if we wanna move forward with this, I'd like to see something eh whether it's a bond in the last phase that would cover. Uh have him cover any maintenance or damage that was caused for construction. See the construction all go through one entrance only, so that we're not getting it from both sides because we've already got. The one piece of woodside Ave that's already been accepted as a public way. How do we hold him accountable for not damaging?
We have a ten percent, we have a ten percent. After the street's accepted, say, phase three is accepted, just going from a scenario of it's accepted. We hold ten percent of that street build bond for one year after that. So if there's any damage or anything such in that one year, it's covered under a ten percent of the bond.
Do you know what that ten percent amount is?
Not off the top of my head at that.
And is that middle so is that middle phase going to be complete within a year?
I again, you're asking me questions. I'm not the developer. I don't know.
But that's a good question because I mean, these subdivisions have been out there since what when, two thousand and five?
No, 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 timeout. That subdivision's been approved. The actual building of it's been in the last three years. I agree that 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 middle section should have been done. The gentleman sitting there and I've had that discussion many times about I needed that throughput cuz I had two dead ends. That's getting done.
But to Leah's point, if it's if it's over a year and that phase three, two and three are not done, then we lose that.
There's only one phase left.
There's five.
Oh, there's only one phase left to do and that's the middle phase.
That has two phases. Woodside and Pioneer is phase three.
Yeah, but phase um one, two. No, no, the only the only phase is fa- is phase um, let me rephrase it. The connection section is a single phase.
It's it's two.
Can't be two. Would cuz there's two wood sides on each side. There's no cul-de-sac off of that.
The.
There's phase four and five.
West West Wyndham and East Wyndham is phase five. Phase four is the middle part of Woodside Avenue.
Then I missed something. I'll have to look at the drawing and remember a s- a cul-de-sac off of that because it's all.
Maybe two left, yeah.
Two cul-de-sacs left. Okay, I don't remember that. I'll have to look. I apologize. I don't have in front of me, so I'll have to look.
But that's that's just my other concern. I just wanted to bring up is a again, having construction, no single entrance in that subdivision. It should still be going through the the one that's not approved or if it is approved, just ensuring that we have enough recourse. That the developer would be responsible for improvements to the road as necessary. If he's constantly traversing it.
Question in regards to Jen's comment. Do we have any experience of when we accept a road? If this town has spent a substantial amount of money fixing a road within when that next phase is done? Do we have any information? I mean, you know, the road, did it cost us three hundred thousand to redo the road because the?
Well, that's I'm not gonna, yeah, we don't wanna go down the bridge.
Do we have any facts on that at all?
The only thing you can talk about, Harry, is.
We're talking about a lot of money spending on the road is the assumption I'm getting and I'm trying to figure out, is that assumption true?
The only is the only assumption that you could potentially use is Arrowhead because that was off of many different roads through. Um, I can't remember the subdivision on that side. It's east, um Brunel East. Um, I don't, and Chris would have to be the one to ask ask answer that question, but I don't remember any significant. You know, the roads coming in Cleveland Circle and the other one Grizzly. I don't remember them of any updates in them since. I don't, I couldn't answer that question off the top of my head. And and Seth is right, the bridge, but that's a that's a sore topic with me. I know the bridges had to have some repairs to it, but structurally, nothing significant. It was mainly road portions that need to be repaired.
I mean, like Jen, I believe in facts and black and white, so. If somebody says, we don't wanna pay a lot of money to redo a road, we gotta look at the history and say. All trucks going over this stuff, was there a lot of money that the town had to put out because of that?
I don't.
Cuz I like to know that number. I don't wanna assume that we're gonna spend a lot of money.
I don't have, I me personally, I don't know of any. In the last seventeen years of of anything that's been damaged in subdivisions that had roads built to them.
Yeah, certainly certainly not could it could be specifically attributed to construction traffic. Okay, yes, there is construction traffic. Does it cause more wear and tear on the roads? Yes. I haven't seen anybody that has documented any way of even remotely quantifying that.
So nobody knows.
Nobody knows. We also have, what do we have? We have four, five trash collection agencies. Traveling these roads with trucks that are just as heavy as those construction trucks.
But but that's that's expected for residential streets. It's not expected for your standard. Once you're approved, that we would have constant construction vehicles and heavy.
Nobody has documented.
Yeah.
Then I I would I would charge the planning board with looking into, how do you quantify that? And how do you how do you document and ensure the developer is paying for the the wear and tear on the roads if?
How do you hold a moonbeam in your hand?
Well, they Jen, the other the other thing is typically on these roads, and this is just information, is that. The developer, until the road's getting ready to be accepted, typically is a course of down there so the damage. Um, can be easily seen and they don't do the final base code until the exception, till it's accepted. Yes, to Leah's point that there's gonna be traffic going over that to finish off, and I apologize, the multiple phases. I just thought it was. When I drive down, I just need it connected, so set vehicles, his emergency vehicles and get one into that subdivision to the other. It's been my pet peeve for about a year and a half now. I don't have an answer and and just in the planning board's knowledge, just for the select board's knowledge too, is. We went to these phases in the in the past, subdivisions never had phases. They just built them. And due to what happened on Brunel East with the the pond being solidified is a good way to put it. We went to phasing to make sure that we could do that and um in this case, the phasing wasn't um. It was out of out of sequence, so.
Which which I I don't disagree with the phasing. I can understand that it would be necessary. I'm just asking that we have accountability for more wear and tear. Due to the construction on the interior of the subdivision, if this road were to be accepted as a public way and that it doesn't come to the expense of the town. Because of that extra.
The only thing only I could think of is negotiating that ten percent bond until. Um, completion of the center one, but that's a negotiation with the developer because our rules and regs say right now, we hold ten percent. Call it a maintenance portion of the road, oh twelve months after the road's been accepted. I I guess we could have that negotiation discussion with the developer.
Good try.
Yeah, uh that's I to the select board, that's about the only thing I could say because we've got specific rules that say.
Bond on the last phase.
On the last or, well, the last phase bond will be held until it's completed and then that'll have another ten percent on top of that.
Can you add to that bond, anything associated with the wear and tear on the existing roads?
They'd be it'd be two different phases. I I don't know. I this would be a question for Kevin if that's possible. I wouldn't have the skill set. I would. I would prefer to extend the bond on the road that's already has a bond on it. Um, by another twelve months if is a nego is what I would. Again, this is, I don't wanna speak for the board. I'm speaking for myself. The board's gonna have to discuss this and talk about it.
I I appreciate the willingness. And that's that's what I'm, again, speaking for myself. Just the documentation and the willingness to discuss and a again, this, once this road is accepted. It it's the whole town that that foots the bill for anything that is not. Right with it or that needs to be fixed on it. So just making sure that all of that is in place. So that it's the developer that we're holding accountable for the.
Yes, and again, I I can see where there's been a disconnect without the. Without the A, the minutes, B, no verbal or no audio. So nobody could ever see what we were talking about or the agreements we came up with. That's a tough one for us, so we're gonna. I I guess what I'm I'm getting at is um when we go through this process, and again, I consider this a learning process. and again, I consider this a learning process cuz this is the first time we went through this process with the, the, the planning board and the select board for roads, that um when you, next time when you ask for a acceptance, put something into the effect along with any documentation or something like that. Cuz all we sent back to, to Mika, and tell me if I'm wrong, we just sent back a letter saying it's accepted and that's it. We didn't, we didn't provide any documentation. Like, we voted on Arrowhead Way that uh seventeen of the thirty-two trees are gonna be planted and we're gonna get uh s- uh fifteen hundred dollars to go into open space. When we didn't provide that to you guys to even know that. Or on the, on the flip side, we didn't provide that uh on um Arrowhead, the grass that was going to be planted in the May. We had that in our motion in our minutes, but it didn't get provided in a document because it wasn't, I don't wanna use the word required, but we didn't think we needed cuz we had it in a motion to put together. So I think if anything, we can consider this a good learning experience between the two boards and, you know, make that mistake. But as for moving forward, I'm gonna ask a question. So if you lay those out and send those to us, is, we've got the learning experience that we can make sure that we've got all this documented, waivers put together and uh send this to you with our, basically saying everything's fine for those through roads. And I'm saying fine, bad, favorable, unfavorable.
Um, and this would include all the waivers and everything?
Yes, cuz um we've got a meeting. The problem is we've got a meeting, what's today? Tuesday? Um, so we've got a meeting, I'm sorry, tomorrow.
Jen, I have this on for December ninth, which gives you guys two weeks before the public hearings happen.
So we can have this discussion. Um, is it, I don't, I can't remember our agenda for tomorrow. Do we have a discussion?
I did include it just as a placeholder. Norm had asked me to.
Okay, so we can have this discussion, Jen, tomorrow about what we need to do moving forward to make sure everybody's on the same page. I don't think that's a bad norm. Is she, that's, I think that is.
Just going forward also, we had transmitted these to planning board in the spring, in mm, end of April, I believe, middle of April. And so, and I was very clear with the developer at the time that we were doing this with,
In advance.
With, well in advance, knowing that it wasn't gonna be May, that it was hopefully going to be fall. But that provided the spring and summer to do the work and have well-thought-out conversation, back and forth documentation. And the fact that the, the week leading up to our meeting, we still had outstanding answers. And the night of our meeting, there were still outstanding, or we were still waiting for outstanding answers. And the night of our meeting, there were still a s- to, to me, not insignificant number of questions that couldn't be answered or addressed was kind of a slap in the face also to the board trying to work with, with everybody well in advance. And so that was also a, a, a frustration. And just going forward, we're trying to work with everybody, I think, me personally, trying to work with the developer, with the planning board, with department heads, with everyone, well in advance. So that this isn't an eleventh hour. We have to make a decision. We have all these outstanding questions and nobody is here to address our outstanding questions. And so I personally had outstanding questions, significant ones in my mind, and I didn't feel comfortable making a recommendation. I still have significant outstanding questions, um especially on the documentation side. Um, y- and we haven't touched on Arrowhead Way, but one of the big things for Arrowhead was the, the Turner Consulting Report.
That's useless. I'll tell you right now, that is a useless report.
But you came before this board and asked to enter into the contract, for us to enter into the con- uh sign for the contract for that. And then there was no communication on.
No, 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 no. Our minutes show, our planner, we gave her distinct recommendations on what we were looking for. We want the Turners to come out, look at the road, look at the water, look at the uh sewer and the water lines and make sure there was none coming in. What we got back from Turner was an erosion report on property that has nothing to do with the road. Zero.
That, what, what, but to my point, there was nothing in the letter that was sent from the planning board indicating that that report had nothing to do with what you were looking for and it sh- was not anything that should be used to consider as far as the street acceptance. It was just, you asked for the contract, we got the report and then there was nothing about it.
Came to us to review.
Right.
And we reviewed it during the meeting that there's no audio and there's no, we actually had the gentleman in from Turner to explain to us. And we basically said, the first, all paragraphs but the last one that suggested he could, I shouldn't say he, they could come back and do all kinds of exploratory on the road that Kevin Quinn had already done the report on. We had Yankee Reports, which was an independent third party, did the reports. Again, I think it gets back to what was the expectation of this recommendation from us to you? Cuz we hadn't done that type of recommendation ever before for a road acceptance. Zero. We just basically send an email or a correspondence to the select board saying that uh we'll make our recommendation at the town meeting and that's typically what we've done to move forward.
And, and I, and I, I, I agree. And I'm not, i- in my opinion, we shouldn't be asking for more than the board's recommendation. However, sitting in on a lot of meetings, not just now, but just in the past, and seeing how things have been documented or not documented, I did a little bit more due diligence. And I, a- again, I feel like there were some holes missed where that favorable recommendation maybe shouldn't have been done because some of these things were missing. So I'd like to be able to accept the planning board's recommendation, a- again, understanding that all of the proper rules and, and waivers, everything is in place. But I'm gonna trust but verify, if you will.
That's fine.
That's, that's where my, my concern is.
So, e- that's your request as a board to the chair. Are we, are we now requesting of the select board's recommendation all the issues that they went through and documented to us so that we can feel good that they did their job? Is that what we're asking? And cuz I'm, really, I, I'm not sure what we're asking.
Tonight is, again, as part of this process, we need to vote to lay out the ways. And if, correct me if I'm wrong, anybody, Mika, but if we vote to lay out the ways, we can then refer it to the planning board who would then go again through the proper steps of having the inspection reports done, reviewing the conditions, as we've talked about with some of these items tonight, doing the due diligence to check these off and see what the current status is. And if they're not, put the proper waivers in place if necessary so that when it comes back to us at the time of the public hearings, we'll have an accurate list and hopefully inspection reports that show everything has been resolved and a favorable planning board recommendation to be able to make the motion to move forward and put them on, well, we have to put them on the warrant because it's a citizen's petition. But mo- vote to move forward after the public hearings. But I don't think we can do that and have them do their due diligence without laying out the ways.
And, and I, I reiterate, Jen, that it is the consideration to, to put them, to look at the ways, but my concern is nobody's perfect. We are all gonna miss an I or a T that we didn't cross. So if we don't constantly communicate with the planning board of issues that we see and just wait for their report, then how can we expect that to be an accurate report when they have done the best they can do? And that's not good enough for us. So if we don't communicate with them, we're missing a piece of the pie. That's why I said about your stuff that you found. Was that communicated to the board, I, uh, to the planning board? So they could work on that.
I'm gonna ask a question. Next time you guys have one of these meetings, invite the planning board. Cuz we're here only because we read the agenda. Legitimately, we, if, if I, if Norm and I wouldn't have read that agenda, we wouldn't even know you're having this discussion. And you'd have been back to the same boat you were when these got voted down. So I'm asking, if you're gonna have questions, technical or planning boards, please communicate through the chairman that you need somebody or the board here or a dual meeting, something like that. I'm gonna ask, please do that. Cuz I think the communication we've had tonight between Norm, myself and the select board has been outstanding and we've learned a lot. But it's only between the two of us coming here that this is, it's happening. Cuz, I mean, we never got an invite. We never got a phone call. Nothing to show up tonight.
You did get an email from the office with the schedule that they would be laying out the ways tonight.
But it wasn't, was it an invitation to the chairman to come here?
You knew exactly what, what the timelines for everything that we were doing.
Okay. So if, if, alright.
I think for, for me, it's like, I would like to not get to the point of, it, it was more the lack of documentation. It was a lot of the developer telling us things that were, happened in a meeting that had just happened, uh, not even a week prior to our meeting. And there was no, yeah, documentation or, or recording or, or anything. And it sounds like there still isn't. Of, of, to me, pretty significant considerations and decisions by planning board um other than a letter just saying that unless everything, unless Director Kloski had outstanding considerations by Friday, everything was good to go. And then it was just through the conversation that there were, oh, well, it was suggested this, it was agreed upon on this. But there, to Jen's point, going back to the documentation, there's no, w- w- there's no, it's just a, a, a verbal words at that point. And it's not any legal binding documentation. So again, to me, this is just a process thing that as decisions are made, make sure that they're documented properly, whether it needs to be o- a formal waiver or whether it's however, on the rules and regs side of things, it needs to go.
Um, I, I know Mass General Law does state that the planning board needs to give us their recommendation. But nowhere in there does it define that.
That's, that's not Mass General Law, I don't think.
Yes, it is.
That the planning board provides our, I think that's the street acceptance policy.
No, it's also in Mass General Law. I read it three times today. It's in Mass General Law.
The road acceptance policy is a document for the select board and the applicant only. There is no reference, no requirement of any responsibility or action by the planning board in that policy.
Correct.
Do you know which MGL states that the planning board has to make a recommendation?
Uh, I, I have it at home. I was gonna bring it tonight and I didn't. I will, I will email you that.
I believe there, there is an article.
Chapter sixty-two, uh, section, oh god, what's the section? Twenty-two, one, twenty-one through twenty-four. I don't know which one.
There, there is an article in our subdivision regulations that we are to make a recommendation at town meeting.
Okay.
Right.
But.
Well, my point is, if we didn't specify to them that we want this, this, this and this, and all we asked for was their recommendation, we got it. They fulfilled their obligation to us. Now it's up to us to go back and say, you know what? We need some more information and it's up for them to get it. So I can't, personally, I can't blame the planning board or anybody on it when they fulfilled their obligation to us by giving us their recommendation. So if you have other issues or anybody has other issues, then we need to deal with it at, at another meeting.
No, I, I, I don't disagree with you, Harry. And I can at least speak that for the next six months that I'll sit in this seat, if we do talk about any additional street acceptance, and obviously we have this timeline. If there's anything else that comes, uh, you know, through for the annual town meeting, we'll make sure that we're strictly reaching out to inform the planning board of any select board discussions. Um, that way you can be informed of questions, concerns that you can then take back and address.
I think you're just looking, Jen, for, I use the word brief, but there, there's another word for it, basically, uh, points.
Just a memo, yeah. And I think we can.
You're looking for bullet points of why it's, yeah, synopsis of, of why we, why we gave a favorable recommendation. And unfortunately, we hadn't done this before and we thought we'd covered it with ourselves by doing the motions and making sure the applicant understood what these outstanding items that were still out there, the trees, the, the grass, um, were gonna be handled and how the planning board is only gonna get an acceptable recommendation because all of, I say this, I'm gonna have to go back and look, that Kevin Quinn's um issues were resolved. And then Chris had issues and we did not wanna give a favorable recommendation to the select board for the approval of these roads until Kev, until Chris was satisfied. Because having us satisfied by our engineer and having the DPW director not satisfied doesn't, is not in anybody's best interest.
I, I don't disagree. But I just, I wanna clarify, the Kevin's reports were not satisfied. That's one of the big concerns.
He left, he left unresolved issues. And if I, if I'm not mistaken, he usually puts in there board, board decisions or something to that effect with the board.
They might have done a waiver. So again, the streetlights were noted, there might be a waiver, which there is.
Yes.
Not for the trees.
Yeah, he didn't, I don't think he put waivers in for the trees or anything like that. He let, just put them as noted, it's not complete. And granite curbs as um substituted for asphalt, Cape Cod burns, is that it?
Right.
Am I getting terminals? Yeah, Cape Cod. So, um, understood. Again, I, I'm not looking to point blaming anybody. I think we've got a good learning experience here. But I think the one thing that we need, and I think Paul and I talked about it, there wasn't enough information in the acceptance, but we didn't know what we were, what you were looking for. And again, we weren't at that meeting when this all went down. And again, I, if I can do anything, suggest next time something like this comes up, it's on the agenda. And Seth might be right. I haven't had a chance to go through my emails. Something was sent to us. Make a call to, to the chairman and make sure you, Jen, you and Norm have talked and if we can get, cuz we'd have to post a meeting if we were all gonna be here. But like tonight, there's just two of us, there's no forum.
So, I mean, we have this document here that we can certainly, I mean, it doesn't expressly talk about the trees or the granite inlets, just that the engineering inspection reports showed unresolved issues. Is that, and then based on tonight's conversation, again, just given the timeline that we have and when you're planning to meet and again, the public hearings are scheduled for the twenty-two.
Next week.
So, um, you know, we can certainly ensure that this document is sent along. Um, and if there's questions, you know, let us know and we can follow up on them. Um, so that, that being said, are there any, Alex, Paul? Any other questions, comments?
No, it sounds like the direction that we need to go from here is appropriate.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the next step would be, a- again, if the board is comfortable to move forward with the layout of the public ways.
Yeah.
Do we need a motion?
I make.
We do. There's a very specific motion in the packet.
We have to do it for each one.
I don't think.
Um, it's, it's its own separate document. It says motion of intention. It's at the back of the memo. I separated it out just cuz they're so lengthy.
I was looking in the packet of, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, I thought it would get too gritty.
Oh, well, you's got a chance at this. Um, Arrowhead Way. I move that the select board votes it. The, it's intention to lay out Arrowhead Way as a public way. Uh, all as shown on a plan entitled definitive plan Bear Hill Two, Rutland, Massachusetts, dated October seventeenth, two thousand and six, prepared by James B. Callick, PLS and PE, recorded with the Worcester South District Registry of Deeds and Plan Book nine-ten, Plan Number sixty-five, and to forward this vote and the plan to the planning board for its comments and recommendations pursuant to General Law Chapter forty-one subsection one, eight-one G and eight-one-one.
Eight-one I.
B-one.
Eight-one I.
Oh, B-one I. Thank you, okay.
Alright, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. Any further discussion on Arrowhead Way? Alright, roll call. Alex.
All right.
Sackman I.
Lemon I.
Matt's an I.
Ledger I.
You gotta do all of them there.
Okay.
Select board voted its intention to lay out Power and Circle as a public way. All as shown on a plan entitled amended definitive plan Bryce Lemon Estates, Rutland, Massachusetts, dated March twenty-eighth, two thousand and fourteen, prepared by James B. Callick, PLS and PE, recorded with Worcester South District Registry of Deeds and Plan Book nine-thirteen, Plan sixty-seven, and to move forward this vote and the plan to the planning board for its comments and recommendations pursuant to General Law Chapter forty-one, subsection eighty-one G and eighty-one I.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Alex.
All right.
Sackman I.
Matt's an I.
Ledger I. Alright, and Woodside Avenue.
Oh geez. I move the select board voted its intention to lay out Woodside Avenue, you guys suck. As a public way, all as, I want that in the motion. Plan titled amended definitive plan of Bryce Lemon Estates, Rutland, Massachusetts, dated March twenty-eighth, two thousand and fourteen, prepared by James B. Callick, PLS and PE, recorded with the Worcester South District Registry of Deeds and Plan Book nine-thirteen, Plan sixty-seven, and to vote forward and to forward this vote and the plan to the planning board for its comments and recommendations pursuant to GL Chapter forty- and the plan to the planning board for its comments and recommendations pursuant to GL Chapter Forty-one, subsection eighty-one G and eighty-one I.
Second.
Second, any discussion on Woodside Avenue? Alright, Alex.
Hold on.
Sackman, I.
Matt's an eye.
Ledry. Alright, thank you. And then just a reminder, the public hearings are scheduled to take place on Monday, December twenty-second. And then the um special town meeting will be January fifth. Alright, any other discussion on the street acceptance? Alright, are there any future agenda requests?
I'll have to wait till Wednesday, I know.
Okay.
I think, Jen, you you have, you know, communication from me about the RDIC charge and um forestry management plan and everything, so I know that that's in the works.
Yes. Yes, we um have a request from the chair of the RDIC to have a joint meeting to um discuss the charge of the RDIC now that the EDC has dissolved. Just uh look for some, they're looking for some directives from the board uh as to their charge moving forward, so.
We're gonna put that on the next agenda.
We're looking to see if we can schedule that for uh a December meeting, yeah.
And just for clarification, sorry, just for clarification, um per all of our legal research and legal guidance, um the developer is still responsible for maintaining um the roads that we just laid out until they are accepted at town meeting. So just for all the residents, it's not that the town is not, it's still on the developer to to maintain them.
He's not doing it. And and I would actually point out, in both of these subdivision plans, that's actually a condition of the the subdivision decision, as well as the subdivision rules and regulations.
He told us he's not showing up. So that's my biggest concern, he's not showing up.
We're not taking public comment, and we'll
He's not showing up. I'm not gonna have cleared roads for my babies.
We will
He's not gonna show up, you don't understand.
We are coming up with a plan B. We will come up with plan B. We've already discussed some potential options.
We're not sharing that with the residents, and we're so concerned.
Because we don't have any information. All we have right now is that per all of these decisions and ro- rules and regulations, he is responsible.
So if there's snow between now and then, you're just gonna leave us.
I can't, we're, I can't comment any further on that. We're not having public comments.
You don't care about the residents.
Um are there any other future agenda requests? I do, I do want to acknowledge, we we are discussing that topic. Uh I'm not gonna accept public comment on that, but we will see what we can do. But it has been publicly noted that he is responsible for that that maintenance. Um upcoming select board meetings, we have December first, twenty twenty-five is the tax classification hearing, December eighth is a regular meeting. December twenty-second is um, is that a regular meeting as well?
It's a regular meeting and a public hearings, yeah.
And the public hearings. Um and then we have January fifth, which is a regular meeting night, so we'll probably have a very abbreviated um, you know, necessities only warrants and whatnot um on top of the special town meeting that we'll have that night. Uh and just again, for clarification, that special town meeting will be at Naquad, not at Glenwood.
Uh question to the chair. Uh I don't, personally, I guess I don't expect this to be a big issue for that one topic. Did we talk about having it at the library, like we did? Remember when you had those twenty-six war ba- uh that
The bylaws.
Yeah, the bylaws, it seemed to be cost effective to do that. Why, why wouldn't we do that again?
It's capacity issue.
Yeah, I I think
You think we're gonna get more of it?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
For the, just that one street acceptance?
There's three.
There's three.
Three street acceptance.
Yeah, there's two hundred signatures.
Yeah, two hundred signatures.
Okay.
Potentially, you could
Okay.
Theoretically.
Okay.
Yeah.
Bring him on.
Well, they all have a right to be heard, so we wanna make sure that we can hold a meeting.
Okay.
Alright, is there anything else to come before the board, before we adjourn to executive session?
You know what, Jen, I'll probably, I don't mean to cut you, I'll probably email you an agenda item.
Okay.
I had it in my brain, and it was something that we had discussed a long time ago that just didn't come up again, so.
Okay, nope, that's fine. Um alright, if there's nothing else, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session for reason number two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, subject town administrator contract, not to return to open session.
Come on. Second. No, you got this one.
Motion is second. Uh no discussion, roll call, Alex.
Hold on.
Sackman, I.
Matt's an eye.
Ledry.